Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Welcome to Pima Community College. My name is Catherine Ripley, and I am the recently elected Chair of the Board of Governors for Pima Community College. And I have with me our Chancellor, Lee Lambert, who you all know, and also our Vice Chair, Damian Klinko, and former Chair. So, thank you so much for being here. This is exciting. It's really exciting for me to see you all in person. We were just talking about meeting on Zoom, and we actually are real people. So, I love seeing you all. Thank you, thank you so much. We hope to be doing more of these as we roll into the new phase of pandemic and post-pandemic world. I'm gonna hold this up, so it's kind of crazy, because if it's down here, I don't think you can hear me, right? Yeah. So, I'm gonna hold it.
Actually, they're gonna get a microphone for us.
Okay, this one. I can hold it for now. So, today's event is taking place on the ancestral lands of the Tonawhatan Nation and the Pasca Yaki Tribe, whose people have been living and working this land since time immemorial. I also further add that it's one thing to acknowledge this fact, it's another to recognize ongoing commitment and support. In this case, Pima played and plays a key role in supporting the establishment of the Tonawhatan Community College and our ongoing educational partnership with the Pasca Yaki Tribe in areas such as emergency medical technician and other career technical education programs. So, for that, we are grateful, humbled, and thankful. We are truly, once again, happy to be here for many reasons. Should I check this? Switching mics. How's that? Check one. Check one. I'd like to start out with a little song. No, just kidding. Check, check. We are truly happy to be here. I'm really happy to be here. This is my first town hall, so, thank you. As we evolve into new phases of the pandemic, we are striving to keep up with, and when possible, stay ahead of all the changes that must happen in order to thrive in this new environment, this new world. The pandemic posed many challenges, as we all know, especially with communication. We have been hearing that many of you feel perhaps isolated and out of the loop, so for that, I wish us all to start fresh, to ensure you that two-way communication is not only welcome but vital to our survival. And so, in the true spirit of community, a town hall is one way to begin an era of greater communication in the form of direct feedback and input from our employees and our community, to all of us. So, thank you for inspiring this spring town hall. The purpose of having a Board of Governors is to offer oversight in order to ensure that the Chancellor is executing the day-to-day management of operations that make this college and its five amazing campuses function and thrive. We have five elected members on the Board, and the fundamental guidance given to us by institutions such as the Association of Community College Trustees, the Association of Governing Boards, and the Higher Learning Commission. And this is the fundamental premise that we all try to live by: Think individually and act collectively. As a Board, we must maintain a common vision that leads directly towards the common goal of student success. I think in that, we are all in agreement. And toward that end, as a community college, "community" is the operative word. That means many things, but particularly accessibility, affordability, equity, inclusion, and diversity for every single person who desires education. And to that end, this college is dedicated to making sure that we do everything humanly possible to make it happen for each and every single person who desires anything from just taking a single class, getting an associate's degree, a trade certificate, their GED, or a pathway to a four-year degree. There are a lot of moving parts, as you all know, that fall under that simple statement: Everything from student, faculty, and staff success to facilities, budget, safety, and human resources. The Board's job is to set the mission, goals, and vision within a fiduciary role to ensure those things happen. And we do not do this in a vacuum. We rely on the concept of shared governance, both in practice and in spirit. It is why we have Faculty Senates, Student Senate, labor unions, who are here today, and all of the employee groups within the AERC. We rely on you to inform us and to literally share in governance. I have a military background, 30 years in the Navy, so when I say this, I mean it. The boots on the ground are what makes it happen. It makes it all happen, and that's you all. And so, on behalf of the Board of Governors, I thank you for your tireless efforts, working the long, hard hours from staff and facilities who ensured the doors were open and the lights were on, even during pandemic, to the faculty, both adjunct and permanent, who spend crazy-long and unaccounted-for hours researching, studying, preparing curriculum, and thinking of creative ways to nimbly stay abreast of the new hybrid asynchronous, synchronous, and in-person class environments. And to those who have gone above and beyond to ensure that every dime we had in reserve and federal funding was spent directly towards the survival and success of the college throughout the pandemic. No employee lost their jobs due to the pandemic, and hundreds of students had their debts waived. For that, I am grateful. I reiterate this point because it is worth noting, until it isn't, that we still do not receive state funding and rely solely on tuition and property taxes to keep those doors open, these fields, these beautiful fields groomed, the lights on, and employees employed. Therefore, in the environment of nationwide decreases in college enrollments, the millions, yes, millions of dollars we here at Pima Community College received and continue to receive annually in the form of donations and grants from philanthropic local community members and organizations have been retained due both to Pima Foundation and their tireless efforts and our Chancellor's constant door-knocking and street pounding. So, until we can get our Governor and state legislature to give us back state funding, we need to continue to be creative. So, with tuition, one of the two steady streams of revenue enrollment is indeed at the forefront of our minds. Our task ahead is now to regroup, rethink a post-pandemic world, and somehow reach those who desire an education but perhaps don't know how to make that first move. We need to reach them. We are all here because we believe in higher education and the spread of knowledge. Everyone here, all of us, are ambassadors for Pima Community College. It will take all of us to get more students and the education they want and need. And I need to let you all know, our local community of business owners, captains of industry, local officials, and the average person on the street are all rooting for us. The University of Arizona Wildcats may make the news and have all the sparkly swag, but it is Pima Community College that is the true heart and soul of Tucson and the greater Pima County community.
Oh, yeah.
It is. Thank you. And so, now, my questions to you are very simple. What questions do you have? How can we help? What do you need to succeed? And how can we all do better, all of us? We need, we rely on your feedback and your inputs. Lack of and poor communication is the number-one cause of everything from families not speaking to each other to war between nations. So, let's talk. Some of you have responded to requests for questions already, so we can begin with a few of those and go directly to audience questions. How's that? Sound good? Thank you so much. Let's begin. All right. Get my glasses on for this. All right. So, there were a number of questions, so I'm just gonna start out with the first one here. The HLC, the Higher Learning Commission, just completed their visit regarding Board governance. How did the visit go? And should we be concerned about accreditation status? And when is their report due? So, there's a few questions in there, and I would like, it went well. It was only a day and a half, I could tell you that. The report is, their report will not be due back to us for another month. I think we may have, May 24th is their deadline. And we haven't gotten even, I have not received any informal feedback yet, but I can also turn it over to Vice Chair Klinko, if you'd like to make any remarks as well.
Thank you.
Check one.
Hello. We're gonna share.
We can share. I'm boosted. I'm vaccinated. [laughter]
So, the HLC question, I think, you know, not everyone was here during our last HLC experience, so I think it's important to provide a little context. The HLC is the Higher Learning Commission, which is the institution's accrediting body, and they accredit higher education institutions all over our region. The Higher Learning Commission received a series of letters of concern from members of the community about actions of the Board and issues around our procurement and practices around RFP and contracting. And because of the history of the institution, the HLC sent two reviewers to conduct what was considered or called a focus visit, specifically to look at the actions of the Board and how the Board is in compliance with the core criteria of the Higher Learning Commission. So, part of being an accredited body is maintaining and showing through evidence that you are in continual compliance with the accrediters' criteria. The visit, as Chair Ripley noted, was a day and a half, and the truth is that we have a Board that is complex. We have varying perspectives, varying backgrounds, varying expertise, and it's made our Board very dynamic, and we've had a lot of three-to-two votes, and it's been complex, and there's been disagreement about some of the core direction of the institution. But despite that, as a Board, I believe, and I continue to remain confident, that we, as a Board, are in compliance with those criteria. And the HLC visit was an opportunity for them to meet with us one-on-one and as a group and better understand each of ours' understanding and role within that context. So, as Chair Ripley noted, May 24th, we will have a report, but we hope that the HLC will find that we are in compliance, and there are varying degrees of options that they have, everything from putting the institution back on sanction, which hopefully will not happen, to monitoring specific components of what we're doing. And so, it is very possible that the Board could end up being monitored for the next few years to make sure that we are in compliance and that we retain in compliance and that we work towards resolving some of the issues that we know we have. And as a Board, I will say, we have continually embraced improvement for the institution and for us. You know, we, the best way to find out what we're not doing right is to assess us, and we do self-assessment, and this is another tool to be able to provide that type of insight.
So, let me just add to all of that. Well said, both of you. So, what the HLC is focused on is our Board following the policies that they have put forth for the institution. So, that's the focus. So, as Chair Ripley said in the beginning, when you look at 2C, one element of that is they set the big piece and they delegate the day-to-day management, in this case, to me, the Chancellor. And are they honoring that separation? That's a big part of what the HLC was trying to understand. And so, I believe that we made that case, not just based on what was said verbally, but more importantly, through the evidence that had been provided to the HLC in advance of their visit. There was voluminous amounts of documentation. We had external reviews by the Attorney General, by the state auditors, by attorneys. So, all of them have come back saying that they did not find any improprieties at Pima Community College. So, I just want you all to know that the evidence is very clear. Now, the question is, do the reviewers see that in terms of the role of the Board, making sure they stay at the policy level and not coming into the day-to-day operations of the institution?
Thank you, Chancellor. The next question is a big one as well, I think, for everybody here, is, we got a question that states, and there were a lot of them, so we just kind of made a composite. When will the Comp and Class, Class and Comp study be completed? And will pay be more equitable across the Board? So, the Class and Comp study, I'm gonna turn it over to the Chancellor to answer more specifically, but I think that the purpose of having a Class and Comp is to make sure that pay is equitable and to make sure that we do everything we can to that end. So, Chancellor, would you like to go into detail on the, when it will be completed?
Yes. So, let me put a context for all this. Instead of just simply answering the question, yes or no. So, when you're doing a Class Comp study, one of the things you want to first determine is where are you going to center the amount that justifies, what we use the term "market." And then, you, once you center that, and best practice is somewhere between 85% and 110% of market, then you go and say, okay, who's outside of that range becomes one bookend to think about, and on one end of the extreme, meaning who's beyond 110% or closer to 110%, and who's on the other side, the other bookend, who's below that range, if you will. Once we establish that, then important decisions have to be made. And so, a steering committee's been in place, but in order to get to that center and understanding these pieces, a lot of data had to be looked at. So, coming back to the bookends for a moment. The college is going to hold harmless the people who are above the 110%. I want to make sure all of you understand it. We're not gonna reduce people's pay because they are paid above the market. The other issue is, we want to bring the people who are below market into that range that I mentioned earlier. Now, an institution can look at that range and say, we want to slide it down further. So, some places will slide it down to 75% and below, because why do they do that? A lot of it is determined based on the size of budget you have to work with. Your revenues and your expenditures affect a lot of these decisions. I would love to see everybody at 100% of market, but given the reality of our resources, we may not be able to put everybody at 100% of market. The goal may be to get everybody there, but the reality is, we can't get there right away, but over time, perhaps, we can get to 100% of market. And so, I think that's important for us to keep in mind, but I will just emphasize, we're not going to penalize people who are above the market. Our hope is to bring everybody more to that center and then therefore pay folks equitably to what the market has said, because what other way do we have to gauge what is fair? But to look at other people who do what we do in other places across the country to come up with that. And it's complex. This is not just a science, it's an art, too, and it's complicated. And we can always disagree about where all of that should be, and that's, I think that's all great, but at the end of the day, we want to get folks as close to being paid fairly as we can, and that's what, I know the Board is committed to doing that, I'm committed to doing that, and we'll work to our best to make that happen. But don't expect it to all happen in one year. This is a multi-year strategy.
Thank you for that. Should we go on to the next question? Okay. The third question. With the enrollment decline, will there be layoffs next fiscal year? If so, how many? Are any Pima buildings or campuses being considered for sale? So, on behalf of the Board, we would be the first to find out if the Chancellor and our finance folks, budget folks, were considering that, and as of now, no, the answer is no. I can let the Chancellor go into detail with that. And as far as the buildings, you know, we love our five campus, I do, I love the five campuses. If anything, and this is in full transparency, if anything, we might be looking at the district offices and moving them to one of the campuses, but as of now, unless the Chancellor says otherwise, there are no plans to close any of the buildings down. Chancellor?
[laughter] Just quickly on this spot, right?
Been watching too much CNN. Over to you.
It is my hope and commitment to not close a single campus down. That's where I start, and work very hard to get to that outcome. Now, in order to get to that outcome, we can't continue to do things the way we've been doing them, because that's not going to be possible. I'll give you some examples. So, I took our Provost, Dolores Duran Surti, to my former state, Seattle, Washington, and we visited the Georgetown campus of the Seattle District. That campus is just a building construction technology campus. That's all they do there. It is the size arguably larger than East Campus. They only have 30 people working at that location. So, if Seattle can run a whole campus with 30 people, why can't Pima run a campus with 30 people? So, that's what goes through my head, okay? So, now, that's the physical aspect of things. Now, I think 30 is too few, okay? So, I don't want you taking what I just said and saying, oh, he's gonna lay off a bunch of people, okay? You'd be taking away the wrong message. But at the same time, that's how we start to figure out, right? What makes sense compared to other parts of the country to gauge what may be possible for Pima Community College? But I just know, and Chair Ripley said it at the outset, we don't receive state funding. There's a reality there. Just on that basis alone, put aside the enrollment for a moment, right? Just on that basis alone, we are faced with a reality, and so, we have to recalibrate to that reality, and that's what we've been doing at Pima. Because we've been doing that, we've been skating to where the puck's going, and the Board had previously had set, you know, us to come up with three scenarios, because we did that and went to that, to the number that the Board had agreed to, when the pandemic hit, we were in a position to do what? Not lay off a single person that had a full-time job at Pima Community College. That's why you have folks like myself at the college, who are always thinking ahead. That's why you have an executive leadership team. Our job is to be anticipating where that puck is going so that we can continue to keep all of you employed, keep all of our facilities running, and provide the most optimal experience for our learners, because ultimately, the real goal is fulfillment of our mission, which is student success. And I think we've done a heck of a job of that, and you don't have to go too far, right? When the pandemic hit, our partner university, that wasn't what was going on there, and you all know that. And so, please don't lose sight of that overall context. I don't want to close a building down. I don't want to lay off employees. We're gonna work as hard as we can to mitigate against any of that happening, but I do need you to also meet us halfway. You're gonna have to reskill, you're gonna have to upskill, and as long as you do your part, then we can accomplish the piece that I just laid out for you, and I believe the Board would support that type of recommendation being brought in front of them if we can pull that off.
Great. Thank you. There's a, hello, Jack? There's a follow-up question here?
I would like to thank everybody for being keeping my job. One of my classes were not as full as they were before. I still had my job, I was still teaching, and I thank you.
You're more than welcome. Thank you. Okay, next question. Why did the college decide to make masks optional? Chancellor?
So... Yeah, I want you to go ahead, Damian. I'll just sort of start, so I think, again, context is so important. At the beginning of the pandemic, the Board made a decision that empowered the Chancellor to help direct data-driven, information-based choice on how we would respond. And the Board, because of our governance model, empowered the Chancellor to come up with a way of assessing what was happening in our community and then make informed decisions and notify the Chair and have discussions with the Chair. So, throughout the pandemic, Chancellor Lambert and I had multiple, I mean, to say multiple would be [laughter] almost a near-daily conversation about what was happening and the impact that it would have on the institution. And since Chair Ripley was elected, those conversations are now happening with her. So, I think it's important, again, just to stress the division of responsibility and how the decisions are being made. And so, with that, I'll hand it over to Chancellor Lambert and the shared governance model that was applied.
So, at the very outset, and it's always the case, the health and safety of each and every one of you is of highest priority. And so, when I was in Seattle, some of us in this audience were in Seattle, when, I think that was the moment that I think we all realized the world was going to change. So, while I was there, and that case happened in Kirkland, Washington, and by the way, just as an aside, that was a clinical site for students from Lake Washington Technical College, which I'm familiar with, and I realized, things aren't gonna be the same anymore. So, I called the Chair and started a conversation. I called the Provost, and I started having a conversation, and I called the Chief of Staff. I said, we've got to be ready to move in a different direction. I couldn't come and ask you all for your opinions and thoughts, because what facts would you all have been operating from at that moment in time, right? So, we were working on what we thought would be a good projection of where things were going to go. And now, in hindsight, I think the point was well-made, right? Because we were focused on the health and safety of every individual of this college. So, we rather have done what we did, and we acted quickly, then, once we started to settle in, then we established a pandemic steering committee. And then, that's where the shared governance starts to get activated again, right? So, we get through the first wave of the crisis, and then, as we were normalizing through the crisis, I just use that term loosely, okay? Then, we could start to re-engage some of the parts of the institution to help provide perspective and guidance. But always, and you've heard me say this from the outset, we will always be guided by the science, always. And so, that's ultimately what led to getting to this decision, because CDC had already come out and said, you can move to a mask-optional environment. We had Dr. Garcia, some of you were on the call, and you heard what he said, very similar thing. So, again, why would we go against the science, the people who are most knowledgeable, who had come back and said that? And then, the other things that I weigh out in that ultimate decision, in addition to what comes from the committee, is I gotta always balance out the political realities. We happen to live in a state that the political realities may not always align with each and every person in this room's beliefs, but I have to weigh that out as part of a decision-making process. What are the other legal considerations, social considerations beyond just Pima Community College? And in this instance, when essentially NAU had come out and said, it's moving to mask-optional. Maricopa Community College came out and said, it's moving to mask-optional. U of A came out, the county, you get the idea, right? So, all of that weighed in, and taking into consideration the thoughts and perspectives coming from the committee, I called Chair Ripley, we had a conversation, and it was time. Now, here's another important point I want to emphasize, too. And I think this was something that was learned coming out of the Spanish Flu and that pandemic almost a little over 100 years ago, that when will the pandemic end? It usually ends first with the social side of it, long before the medical or the science side of it, and so, we have to keep that in mind. I know Brian can appreciate what I'm saying. So, what is our society saying about the pandemic? And those are things we're gonna have to keep in mind. Is it possible we could go back to masking? Absolutely. That is possible. Hopefully, we're through the worst of all of this, but health and safety will always be at the forefront, and I gotta balance all those other variables when I come back to the Chair of the Board.
Thank you for that. I wanted to also just take a minute. So, if any of you are getting too hot or tired or parched, there's about nine seats in the front that I don't think are gonna be filled anytime soon, so come on up. I'll go to the next question in the meantime. What are the Board and Chancellor considering in terms of salary adjustments due to rising inflation? Besides a COLA, Cost of Living Allowance, will there be consideration for staff to earn steps? earn steps again? So a lot of this, some of this will come out with the class and comp, but I think I'll turn this over to Chancellor Lambert to answer the specifics of that.
So, so this is part of the work of the steering committees, is to help us understand how we're going to approach class and comp now that we have the data in front of us. And you heard me say, here's kind of the best practice range. What other, what other ranges should we look at? And then what models of progression should we put in place? So, so typically, there's a step model. There's also a broadband model. And you weigh all of those kinds of things to determine what makes the most sense for the college. Now, they could be different by employee group. In my former state, the classified staff, which included the exempt staff, they were on a strict step schedule. The faculty were on a step schedule, but not as strict as the, the classified staff, and the administrators were on a broadband schedule. And so you could have mixed models, if you will, coming out of this study as we go forward. But at this point, completely open to the different models, I think it would be most helpful, I hope the board would agree with me, to have the pros and cons associated with the models, not just come with, this is the model. And why that's important is we got to look at our revenues, we got to look at our expenditures, and we got to look at where that puck is going in terms of enrollment, and what can we balance? Because if you overtip it, then guess what's going to happen if enrollments continue to decline? The only way you can balance that is guess what? And I don't want to go there. And, and so, so that's something we have to keep in mind. So that's why this is a delicate balance of art and science. So I could easily see a step coming back in, and what does that look like still needs to be worked out. But the other side of it, too, the board has said in the past, they want us to think about a performance-based model. So I could see a blended model where you have steps to a point, and then you have a performance-based system that goes beyond that. And you've seen that, I believe the university is on a performance-based model, if I understood some of my colleagues correctly over there. And so again, no, nothing's been decided, but I will say this, because some folks think this is taking too long. And, and the answer is yes, it's taking too long. But what's the other side of it taking too long? We, we're taking too long because we wanted to make sure we gave everybody a chance, steering committees, et cetera, to have input into what will be the, the design that we're going forward with. So sometimes you have to take a little longer to get to something that everyone can say, I can live with that. I may not like it completely, but I can live with that. And there will be no perfect model ever. So we have to not lose sight of that, too, right? So we have to get to a model. It's taking a little longer, but I will say this. During this budget cycle, we will set aside the money to begin funding the class comp. So even if decisions are not made about where people will go in the mo, the new design model, we will set aside the money in this budget for this upcoming fiscal year. So once that is all worked through, we will retro back to July 1. So, so just keep that in mind, too. I'm hoping we might get this, through this before that, but if we don't, just know that there's a commitment from myself, and I would, I believe the board is in agreement, that we would be able to bring everyone back to July 1 as part of the implementation.
Yes, follow-up question, please. I think there are microphones back there.
Thank you. Matej Bogoshevichak, I'm a math faculty member. I just wanted to follow up on the couple of questions ago. So when is, when do you expect would a first draft of this class and comp recommendations be available? Because please understand is it is only at that point that the real input process and work begins to write the policies and, and all the details. So, so just curious about that aspect. Thank you.
And, you know, some, some, there may be some folks in the room here on the steering committees, and depending on what designs come out of that steering committee, I don't know when they're going to come out of the committee, hoping soon, sooner than later, and then we can move to the next level of work.
Okay, now I'd like to open it up to audience questions. We do have microphones, so yes, right up front. And yeah, please state your name and your department.
I can speak loud.
Okay.
I know, I know, sir.
Oh, it's recorded.
It's being recorded, so, so you need to speak into the mic, please.
Way up front, way up front.
There we go, yeah. We're passing the baton. There we go.
Hello? Is that okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Goli. I'm an adjunct in the humanities and the history departments, in both departments. And I'm aware that, well, I'm sure everybody's aware, that the governor passed that, or signed that bill saying that community colleges can grant four-year degrees. And from what I've heard, that Pima's kind of moving in that direction in certain divisions, I believe in applied tech. And I'm wondering if this is going to be applied to all of the divisions. As somebody who is in like, social sciences and humanities and education, the number of students I encounter that stop after two years because they can't afford to go to the U of A is really heartbreaking to me. Like, they're brilliant kids. And I would like us to move towards that, where we are, like, we talk so much about inclusivity and like, you know, serving our community. This is our community, and it's, it's a little frustrating to see, like, there seems to be kind of, I'm not trying to throw any division under the bus. Greg Wilson's one of my good friends, so like, I'm not saying, oh, no, applied tech is terrible. But I'm saying that, like, there seems to be kind of a favoritism towards, you know, workforce and applied tech and these types of applied skills types of programs versus things like humanities, social sciences, arts, education. And the problem with this is that you kind of start to create a two-tiered society in which the students who are working class, marginalized, people of color, the ones who are coming to like, community colleges, if you consider the demographic here, we're what, like, two-thirds, we're majority-minority institution. And the types of degrees that you're like, making available at that four-year level tend to be in those applied skills programs, and you deny that group of, like, the students that I have in my classes, who are wanting to get four-year degrees but can't because they can't afford to go on to the U of A. How, how, how are you going to, you know, deal with this? Or are you going to? Is this, is there anything in the future in which, you know, I can tell my students, hey, like, don't worry, like, you know, there's, you're going to have an opportunity? The other problem, and I, I kind of want to just, I want you guys to think about this because that two-tiered society that you're building, you know, if you have only a certain group of people going into these applied skills jobs, which is great, they make a lot of money, but who's making all of the policies? Who's going into politics? Like, I believe, Damian, your, you, your degree was in art history, right? It's people who study humanities and social sciences and education, and all of those types of things. Those are the people who are making our society. And I just hope that there's kind of an equal sort of attention being paid. I heard from my department head, my humanities department head, that our division didn't get any of our faculty hire requests approved, and it's just really heartbreaking all around. There seems to be like, a push towards particular divisions, and saying, hey, if you're in this particular group, if you're going to Pima, and again, majority-minority students, majority people who can't afford it, working class, all my students all work, this, these are the only options that are available for you. Well, what if somebody doesn't want to do that kind of thing? What if somebody has desires to become a chairman of a board of some sort? What if they want to be politicians and lawyers and all sorts of other things that aren't these applied skills?
So, yeah, thank you for that, yeah. Good. So I'm just going to kick it off here. So, so as a musician and champion of the arts my whole life, political science major at the Naval Academy, I, I hear you. We're a community college, and I'm not going, and I'm not going to say, yeah, we're going to go into complete four-year college, but it will happen in increments. Not sure how far we'll get. And there were many steps to get to where we are, to include partnering with schools like NAU and U of A and ASU. So we had to really make sure everybody involved was on board before we made this four-year decision. A lot of those decisions, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, had to do with workforce development as well, and what the needs are in our community. And I agree, the people that are running our world, you know, a lot of them are lawyers and, and, you know, have majors in, in law, but a lot of them don't. There's, there's a lot of people that, that have humanities majors. So, and I, and we all agree, I know that we do, we've had these conversations, that the humanities in a well-rounded liberal arts education is really important, even to the people that are just seeking certificates. We encourage signing up for that language class, that writing class, an art class. So, so we hear you. I'm going to, but, but again, the, the, I'm going to hand it over here, but the, the technical way forward to get there is, is a little bit complex. So can, did you want? Yeah. I'll let you add.
So, so, I mean, there were multiple facets to your question, and Chancellor Lambert, I know, is going to unpack all of the regulatory components and the financial components related to offering the four-year degrees and what that really looks like in the context here. But I, I think what is important is that when, when, certainly when I joined the board and the work that the board has done over the last seven, eight years now, when Chancellor Lambert arrived and when I joined the board, we had allowed the career technical training programs to really deteriorate. They were suboptimal. They just weren't. I mean, there's no way. We assessed them, we looked at them, and we, they needed significant investment. And the transfer side of the house, because it is a two sort of different paths, was in much, much better shape. And so the investment and the strategy around what's gone on in the Centers of Excellence, particularly in these applied technologies, really has been by design in order to level the playing field. And I think what you, the top, what you're bringing is 100% true. I mean, we are just as committed to offering and maintaining that, that liberal arts thinking, but also offering it in 21st century so that when students leave here, whether they continue on to the four-year degree, or they stay at a, you know, an associate's degree, that they have 21st century skills that they can take into the workforce. And so that's one of the really exciting things that we talk about as a board, this type of innovation, and how do we structure, and how do we support this vision around this type of design thinking and learning so that it's, it's really universal value? And I think the other thing that I would love for Chancellor Lambert to share is his experiences and his visits to Switzerland, and what's going on there, because I think in many ways, the country is moving in that direction.
So, so I went to the Evergreen State College. I am completely committed to the liberal arts. In fact, what helped pre-pandemic, the fact that I read Camus, read The Plague, and as these things were happening, it's like, I could start to think ahead. That comes from a liberal arts orientation. Not saying every liberal arts student walks away with that, but, but that was very essential to who I am. Now, with all that said, if you look at, from a data perspective, and you look at the data for the state of Arizona, and, and this data is from the National Skills Coalition, who did an assessment of all 50 states to determine the skills gap based on degree attainment levels. And what they found in the state of Arizona is Arizona's not lacking in bachelor degree production. It's, it's meeting what it needs in that space. It's overproducing arguably, in terms of skill set at that coming out of high school area. I would, I would debate that, but anyways. But where the gap was in the middle skills, well, who does that work? Our community colleges in the state of Arizona. Where I really think the real gap is in the state is we don't have enough community colleges. So that's, keep that in mind, okay? So now, if you isolate to the bachelor's degree, where is the real gap in there? It's in the STEM area. Okay? It's not enough folks are getting the STEM foundation coming out of the universities and the four-year colleges. So you have to keep all of that perspective when you're thinking about this question of the four-year degree. So with all of that said, the state passed a law, what I was pushing the state to do first was develop a master plan, understand what is really needed, data-informed, and then, once you do that, then set policy that helps power us to, in that direction. State chose not to do that. They're doing these piecemeal things. I'll hit this one other example, and then I'll get back to this question, okay? Right now, the J-Teds, guess what they want to do? They want to offer associate degrees. It's kind of hard for us to push back when, what? We got the authority to do what? Offer four-year degrees. Now, with that said, it wasn't an unlimited amount of four-year degrees that the community colleges could offer. There's a cap. And Maricopa and Pima have even more of a cap on what we can do. So we can't offer a four-year degree, say, in the liberal arts. Now, we have to be strategic. Now you overlay the Higher Learning Commission. If we do more than two, we have to go through an extensive re-accreditation process. That's a multi-year process, very expensive, and, and so there's a lot of moving parts. I think you're getting the idea. So we can do two. And not, we still have to go through the Higher Learning Commission, but it's not, we haven't changed our mission at that point. So we can do two.
But why not liberal arts when we have the largest division?
It doesn't work by the largest division. What you have to do is you have to look at what the need is in the community, and then weigh out all of those considerations, like, what is the university able to do? I will, I will let you know, Chair Ripley pointed to this, NAU is looking to expand their presence here in Pima County. They want to partner with us to do that. They would be the perfect partner to do what you're just, what you're talking about. So that, that's an example, okay? But where's the gap that they can't do, the U of A can't do, ASU can't do? That's what we're looking at. So, so there, so we have a group who's going to be looking at which two that we're going to do. So no decisions have been made, contrary to what you're hearing, no decisions have been made about which two. But I have said that I think we have to fill the gap that doesn't exist in the community, where there's nothing. And, and, and look at, I mean, Cal Poly's degrees are very well-respected. So to think that a, an applied STEM degree is not well-respected, I think we need to take a pause on that. Also, as Chair Klink, I mean, Vice Chair Klink said, so I went to Switzerland. And what they have done is they've built a dual-system model, where you can go through this apprenticeship track all the way up to the master's degree, or you can go the more traditional track to, to higher education. That goes to the doctorate degree. Without them imposing which one, 70%, at least 70% of the families choose the apprenticeship track. People who come through that apprenticeship track, they go on to be your CEOs. So we should not assume, because I went that track, that I will not be a CEO, that I will not be a lawyer, because you can move over and become a lawyer, or become a medical doctor. So I think our country has been too binary in our approach to higher education. When you look at some of these other countries and the innovation, Switzerland is considered, by the way, the number-one country for skills development in the world. And so I think they have shown a model, a way forward that I think we need to weigh in. And here's my last point. When I first got hired here, one of the criticisms of the former administration was they wanted to turn Pima into a four-year college. And many people in the community were not happy about that fact. That's not lost on me. So we have to go through this, as Chair Ripley said, very carefully. It's not just about what Pima, what we think. We've got to reach out to the external community and help educate them about all of these pieces before we make any final decisions. That's why it's taken us longer than what you're hearing at some of the other communities, but they didn't face the same challenges we have faced here in Pima County.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add one point of clarity, too. When we say partnering with like, NAU and U of A and ASU and others, it also means partnering to clear a path and a transition from two-year to four-year to include ensuring Pell Grants and other grants and scholarships happen, and internships, et cetera. So that's another big piece that we, we are all working really hard on, because there are some stumbling blocks, even with U of A, and we're, we're fighting them. Thank you. Any other? Okay, we'll go, yes, up in the front.
Hi there. My name is Josh.
My name is Joshua Bailey. I'm a student here at Pima. And this question is mainly directed at Chancellor Lambert. However, I would like general input from everyone else. Do you believe that pay raises for higher administration is beneficial to Pima in general? And do you believe that it is also proportional, given the amount of work that you may do for these pay raises?
So, so again, it's not a yes, oh, you, you want me to go ahead? It's not a yes or no kind of response. The question is, what kind of college do you want? Do you want a premier, leading institution in the country? Or do you want a, you know, so, so, so okay college? That, why that's important? Because you want to attract the kind of talent that's going to allow you to drive your institution forward into the future. That cost. And, and so, but with that said, the board did a class comp on my position. I don't know if you want to talk about that? To determine where my level of position fits in the grand scheme of things. So I don't know if you want to say something about that?
I would have the end.
Okay. So anyway, so that's one facet of it, right? But let me put it in another context, right? And this isn't so much about me, but it's more about the institution. And I appreciate your question. Pima Community College was approached by Harvard University to be part of a four, five-college study of the most innovative community colleges in the United States of America. Rutgers University just published a report on the colleges who are shaping, reshaping the landscape of higher education. Guess who's in that report? Pima Community College. Bank of America identified 21 colleges and universities across the country that they felt were doing things that were really addressing communities of color. Guess who one of those 21 are? Pima Community College. Also, the community, the Ed Design Lab was looking for six innovative colleges to launch a new innovative model for higher education called Micro Pathways, based on a T-profile. Guess who one of those six colleges are? Pima Community College. Was Pima doing any of that before I arrived here? So I just use that to help you kind of think about that, right? Leadership matters. Yes, all of you do the work, as the chair said. But without the vision to keep drawing us in a direction and building the relationships and the partnership, none of this happens by accident, okay? You want, you want to get the best talent that you can. I would hope you would want the best talent at this institution that we can afford to bring onboard. So those are the considerations you weigh out, right? But even with that, you always want to make sure you're being fair. And that's why we do class comp studies, to kind of help us gauge those kinds of things. And, you know, I brought Michael Amick here from Minnesota. And why was that important? Because our Pima Online is an award-winning, recognized model. There was no Pima Online before I arrived. And so to have top talent like a Michael Amick, we have to be willing to pay to attract folks from other places who are highly talented. I have, I see David Dore in front of me, same thing. David brings an incredible mix of skills and knowledge to this institution. And he brings a can-do, we can make this happen perspective. I want the David Dorays here at, at the institution, but that cost. And by the way, David is being sought out by a number of colleges and universities. We have Tina Neal back here. She has transformed our professional development program for employees at the college. And so we needed to attract her. She's a director-level person at the institution and doing incredible work to support our employees. In fact, when the HLC was last out here before this prior visit, they were impressed that Pima had committed so much resources to the professional development of its employees compared to other institutions that it, that it sees. That doesn't happen by chance. It happens because we have talented employees of, of the college. So that, so I just lay that out for you to think about. And those are important considerations, yes.
Okay. So again, I mean, the chancellor alluded to it, but the board, you know, also takes their role very seriously in compensation and the chancellor's compensation. And we, three years ago, was it three, three, three and a half? The pandemic does distort time a little. Three and a half years ago, we went through a class comp study and we brought in a consultant and we looked at what peer institutions were paying. And we, you know, really right in the middle. So, you know, and again, the, the board has continued to articulate a commitment to becoming a premier institution. And the board says it over and over and over again. We say it in our, we say it in our vision statement now, and we say it continually. And the resources, as the chancellor noted, need to be applied to be able to do that. And we're doing it in a host of different ways. And as we talked about, the class comp study in totality, that's a way of rec, of acknowledging through compensation where people really are competitively in the, in, in workforce.
And, yeah, so I don't want to make any excuses because I don't really know what the steering committees are doing with class comp. And I know everybody is frustrated over not knowing when that will be completed. But one of the things that I stressed as a board member and now chair is that it needs to be done right. And, and our biggest concerns are especially for those people that are making, you know, barely above living wage perhaps, arguably, the staff, the non-exempt staff. We really need to take care of those folks. But and then on the other end of the spectrum is, as, as our wonderful adjunct professor talked about, our community deserves to have a great school that they can afford to attend. They deserve the best faculty and adjuncts and staff and administrators and buildings and Centers of Excellence. So that's, the other end is we're striving to do that, but at the same time, not at the expense of employees, especially in the, the faculty, adjuncts, staff and non-exempt staff. So, thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Oh, you guys are shy, quiet. Now's your chance, yes.
Eric Saphir, political science. I wasn't actually going to ask a question, but there were, there are two things I want to ask about based on other questions that were asked. And one of them is when the, for, for, community colleges may offer four-years degrees, when that was first passed, the local newspaper reporting suggested that one reason why Pima wasn't super excited about jumping at this really fast was simply lack of resources. To put it very simply, it sounded like one thing that would get, would have gotten the college more excited is if the state committed additional resources to this rather than simply trying to get more four-year degrees on the cheap. And so I, I don't know if the resource question is part of the institution's thinking as to when and how and so on to go there. So that's one question. The other question is, among the few good ideas that I remember from our previous, long ago, Chancellor Roy Flores, and they were not all good ideas, was the tuition opportunity program that he pushed. And what that basically was, he was an economist. So what he was pitching unsuccessfully to the state legislature was the following. To guarantee that if students started a community college, they can finish their four-year degrees at a university for the same cost. That the legislature would save enough money by people doing their first years at a community college that that would then warrant spending that money to finish up at a four-year institution, which would address some of the questions, what was raised earlier about how do you transition from this tuition to that tuition model? And so I'm just wondering if there's any possibility that our, you know, institution, our lobbyists might at some point reach out to legislators and see if something like this might be a possibility for the future, if they ever decide to, you know, provide funding again. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Saphir. Well, damn. I, I never knew about that. So I, Chancellor, do you have, can you? It sounds awesome.
So I, I think what you've seen is an evolution of, of a tuition and fee structure for higher education. And so, so this was a good idea, but it required a lot of moving parts to put in place, as you, as you well know. And, and unfortunately, we're in a state where the legislature does not support finance, state aid for students. We're one, I think we may be the only state now that does not offer a financial aid program for students. So if that's the, you know, that's where you're starting from, right? So then to get to these kinds of ideas is very difficult when we can't even get them there on something like that. So what has happened is the universities have come forward with this, this notion of, of trying, being able to make tuition free for low-income individuals. What they, when they, they were successful in getting that passed. They included the community colleges, but, but if you add in the nuance, it's, it's a last-dollar-in program. Why that's important? Because after you use your Pell Grants and all of that, then this money comes in on top of that for, for tuition and fees. Guess what happens if you are a Pell student at Pima Community College? You don't pay tuition because the Pell covers it. So in essence, we're not able to access the dollars because it's a last dollar. We wanted it to be a first-dollar-in program like you see in California, where the money comes in first and then you put the Pell on top of it. So that, so those are the models. Now, we, we were a big advocate. And, and I spent a lot of time trying to help some of our lawmakers at the federal level see the wisdom of free community college. And, and we got, we made some headway, but we could not get, you all know the dynamics, right? But I just want you to know, I'm committed to trying to figure out a way to get there. But I also have to be realistic about, about how, the way forward. And then, and, and wait for the right dominoes to fall into place that allow for opportunities to now, we, I think we have the federal administration, we thought we had, thought, right? But we saw that that wasn't even the case for, for the president's own party. So that, you can see how hard the lift is, right? When your own party isn't behind a great idea. So I just want you to know, we are committed to trying to figure out a way. But for our students who are Pell-eligible, who are taking full-time, effectively at Pima Community College, your tuition and fees are covered. Now it becomes about your total cost of education. And, and, and you're probably aware, we're one of the lower-cost institutions in the United States. California is arguably the lowest cost. But then, once you get outside of California, then, then Arizona is pretty competitive. And our board's been committed to keeping tuition low. But there's a trade-off for that, too. Because when the legislature cut out our funding, their response was, you have the ability to raise tuition.
Thank you. No, those are hard decisions to make. We did, we did raise tuition this year by a couple of dollars, but we, we didn't raise property taxes or tuition during the pandemic. So now we're kind of catching up with that. We, we're at 411 now, and you're all here still. I think we have time for a couple more questions, if you don't mind staying. Or should we answer these?
Go ahead.
Oh, Makayla, yes, please.
Hi, Makayla Hayes, faculty and PCEA president. I guess I've been listening to all the answers to the class and comp questions and the passionate answers about the administrators. And first off, I want to say, I think paying our administrators what they're worth is definitely something we would all agree is important. I know that your message is not that we have to pay administrators what they're worth and we don't have to pay other people what they're worth because it's not as important. I will say it's a little hard to hear it. Flowery to one group when other groups are so low-paid. And so just, just throwing that out there for those of us that might be sitting here feeling like, are we paid enough? Are we worth enough? Because that, that is definitely a feeling that one can get. Also, speaking as a faculty member, faculty have basically been told that our salaries are within that range that you're saying. If the goal is to bring people up, the implication is that faculty aren't going to get much through the class and comp study. We haven't had a step in seven years. This would make eight years. We're not, I personally do not see how this is going to be finished in time for contracts. I appreciate the, the intention to back pay to July 1st. That's the first I've heard of that. I really appreciate that idea. But I would like to ask during this budget cycle, as you look for the budget cycle, to really consider the morale implications of not putting more towards faculty and making sure that faculty get something significant because our students deserve faculty that are here for them, that can afford to be here for them, and that are worth their money as well. And if you get what you pay for, let's make sure we pay for faculty for our students. And I'm not a staff rep, but let's pay for the staff that we need as well. So I'm going to just say that because, you know, they, they make our lives easier. So definitely worth paying everybody what they're worth. But if we can find some money in the budget that's not already allocated towards, you know, paying our staff and faculty and administrators, if there are other budgets that we could reduce in order to put that towards personnel, I really think that would be a huge morale boost for everybody here.
Thank you, Makayla. Did you want to?
So, I'm sorry if, if I gave you the impression that I, I value administrators more than the faculty and the staff because that's not the case. The whole reason to do the class comp study is to make sure we, we treat everybody as fairly as possible. What other means and methods do we have but to do it that way? So that's, that's why we're doing it. It takes a little more time because we're dealing with a lot more individuals than the number of administrators we have at the institution. So you have to keep that in, in, in mind as well. Now, let me push back on something you said. You said steps. Pay raises aren't just steps. Pay raises are also made of COLAs. So the college has given COLAs a few times since I've been here. In fact, this last year, the board approved a 2% along with a $1,000 piece as well. And we've done that a few times prior to that. So I don't want folks to leave with the impression that the only way you get a pay increase is through a step. COLA is also a pay increase. So keep that in mind. Now, in my former state, I'll just use that as a comparator, the legislature appropriated monies for raises, whether it was to fund a COLA or a step. We don't have that system here in Arizona. Now, that's, that can be good and that can be bad. So during the Great Recession, Pima was giving raises. My former state, we went five years without a single raise because of the Great Recession. So I want us not to lose the context either. I think that's important. We're trying our best with what we have to work with. We've trimmed back. I can tell you, the administrators feel overworked, too. Because there are fewer, that we have less administrators at our institution than many other institutions of our size. Because I'm trying to make sure that we have the front-facing to the students, have the staff there, have the faculty there, not in, in the back-office side of the administration. So that's the balancing piece in all of this. So it's always a moving piece. I want to make sure that we pay everybody fairly. That's why the class comp. That's very important to me. But I also have to recognize, we only have so much money to work with. Let's take care of the people who are well below and bring them up as well as look at how we take care of the people who are, who may not be in that same situation. There will be a COLA we've been talking about for everybody. So what we're talking about is a COLA for everybody and then bringing the people up as well. So I think you're going to see that, that we're trying to keep that all balanced as we go forward.
Thanks, Chancellor. Hello, hello, hello. Thank you, Chancellor. Thanks, Makayla. It's a very important question that you posed, and it's one that we are not going to take lightly. The chancellor is tasked by the board. We have oversight of, of all of the millions of things that he does every day on a day-to-day basis to operate and manage five campuses. And so he's, his answers are, are awesome. They're, you know, he's doing what he can. And, and the way in which he can, he can do it is what we- is what we as, as board members have to oversee. With that said, what I heard in your statement, which was very eloquently put, is morale. And so this is something that we will work on. We have to try to see how to do it. I don't know, I don't know if the chancellor knows. And I can, he could, he'll never say this, but he's, he gets phone calls from us that you all don't know about. And, and it's, it's, he's got a tough job, but we're keeping on it. And I think morale is huge. It's gigantic. Again, I started this out with talking about community and community being the operative word for, for Pima Community College. And I think we could make it all happen. Not everyone's going to be super stoked about their salary perhaps or their, but, but I think this is why we have labor unions and we have AERC, because we have to be kept honest and we have to be kept on our toes to ensure that the faculty, adjunct professors and permanent, who are the bread and butter of what we do, are, are being treated fairly and also given the salary that they deserve. And this is something that, again, without a class and comp, we don't have a baseline. We can all say, yeah, we want more money. But, but again, you know, where does that get doled out and how? So we got to start with that. And, and I, I will, as a chair, apologize for it taking so long. I don't know, you know, how we can speed that up. We've got steering committees that are made up of employees. So we need to move that along, I agree. But we want to do it right. And again, this is, and this is why we decided to have a town hall, is we don't want morale to suffer. We've suffered enough through pandemic. We've all lost people. We're still losing people and friends and family. So if anything, I really, I, I want to stress one more time as we close. This is your school. This is your community. This is ours. We have to make this work. We are all ambassadors. We're going to listen to you. I'm going to personally listen to you. And it will trickle down to the chancellor. He will listen to you. You can talk, you know, I don't know if people are afraid to talk to him, but, but he's all ears. So we need to hear this, the good, the bad and the ugly. And we're here for that. So I, I don't think we have any time for another question, but we will stay here, up here on this nice table with the blue tablecloth. And we will answer any other questions that you might have and let, let everyone take off. Real quick, yes? Um, oh, sure, sure, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Watfasio Famoscozo, Director of Environmental Health and Safety. I was kind of looking around because I was a little bit concerned that we don't have a huge representation here tonight. When you talk about morale, I think we would like you to address some of the concerns that have been increasing in the last few years, but the perceived discrimination that is happening at the college. So when, when we talk about morale, it is part of that.
It totally is. Thank you so much for that question. And yes, and this is why we hired an amazing new human resources person. We have Office of Dispute Resolution. We will, you know, take, we get a lot of ideas from, from all of you on how to increase morale. We've got some amazing people working on that, our communications person. And all of the amazing events and things that we try to do to, you know, we have masseuses and we have, we have this tomorrow, everybody go see the, the piano lesson. You know, this is something that, you know, we need to support each other with the arts as well. But I think that this is something we all take seriously. So yes, morale, if there's any, any, anytime I hear the word discrimination or anything that has to do with treating people poorly, whether it's equity, diversity or, or inclusion, our, our ears perk up. So please know that we will listen. Thank you. So with that, um, yes, I.
And I, and again, you know, I would again reiterate that if anyone in this institution, anywhere, is concerned about mistreatment of any kind, we have processes, procedures, we have an Office of Dispute Resolution, we have an online portal, we have a telephone number. Go to your supervisor and discuss it. Please don't keep it to yourself. Bring it forward. The institution is looking to improve and we don't tolerate discrimination, period. So please use the systems that are in place.
Let me add to that. Also, the state and the federal government also has vehicles for that as well. So if you don't feel comfortable coming to the college, you can always go to the state of Arizona or you can go to the EEOC or the Department of Education to file your concerns. So, so again, there's multiple avenues because I take it very seriously. If someone comes forward with a discrimination harassment complaint, that will be looked into and then addressed accordingly. Just want you to know that that's my commitment to make sure that we address those types of issues.
So much for coming. And we look forward to working closer with you in the near future and maybe another town hall before it gets hideously hot. But thank you so much. Be safe, be careful, have a great weekend. And again, go to the piano lesson on August Wilson play. Thank you.